Okay, ready.
Okay, welcome everybody back to our June 28 meeting. We have nothing to report out of closed session. So we can move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jonathan, you need us tonight?
Oh, with pleasure. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
We do not.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from June 14th. Were there any changes to the June 14th minutes?
No, no, we're not.
Okay. Will we, is there anything to approve those minutes? Motion to approve, please. Oh, yeah. Let's take public comments on the agenda item number nine. Agree with the minutes, any public comment? Seeing none, clear motion?
Motion to adopt minutes or prevent minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we can move on to the agenda item number 10, which is our employee organization reports. Brenda, do you have anything to say?
Just real quick. I want to make sure to thank member Jonathan Wright for his many years of service to the community and his openness to always listen to us. He's seen us through bonds. He has helped to manage the funds to rebuild our elementary schools. And the face of Martinez has greatly changed with his leadership. So thank you, Jonathan. I also want to acknowledge what a long, hard year this has been. And I'm sure nobody's going to protest putting it in the books. This is the last school board meeting of the year and summer school concludes on Friday. I want to acknowledge our students and their parents and all of our MUSD staff and the board for their bravery, their spirit, their grace as we travel this extremely bumpy road. And as far as we have come, next year will be far from easy. I wish everyone a July full of rest and recuperation. We're going to be rolling up our sleeves again in August as we meet our students where they are and forge forward in their learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Stephanie, do you have anything to say?
No, thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number 11, comments from PTA. Do we have any comments from PTA this evening? Okay. Doesn't look like it. So we'll move on to agenda item number 12, correspondence. Let's do it.
Thank you. I'm pleased to announce that the Western Association of Schools and Colleges a loss board has concluded its mid-cycle review at Vicente and Briones high schools. And it's been determined that we are good to go for another three years. So congratulations to Vicente Briones for their accreditation. And we will have our next full cycle review in 2024. So thank you to everyone who worked very hard on that.
Excellent. Move on to agenda item 13, which is staff board acknowledgement announcements and reports. Before we move on to Julie, does any board members have any announcements, reports? Doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you. Well, it is my great honor to thank board member Jonathan Wright for his dedication and commitment to the students and families of Martinez. Jonathan has served as a trustee since 2016, served as board's president twice, and during his tenure as a board member has experienced some of the most challenging circumstances and situations. As an avid supporter of the children and staff of the district, Jonathan, along with his team, has provided tremendous guidance and leadership during the pandemic. His passion and concern are evident, and the pride he holds for Martinez is palpable. His unwavering desire to support students, staff, teachers, and administrators to help them reach their potential is inspiring. And leading during a global pandemic is no easy task. Jonathan's worked tirelessly to help improve and build district facilities with a keen eye on student and staff safety. Serving as a member on the Measure Our Planning Committee, Jonathan provided great insight and feedback to ensure the new facilities would be functional, safe, and locations where the community would be thrilled to send their children. Advocate for our local labor force, Jonathan supported the district's project labor agreement to provide local union workers opportunities to develop these amazing facility projects. Jonathan is focused upon equity and inclusion, and I appreciate his vision for ensuring a sense of belonging for all students, staff, and community members. Voltaire is for this meeting as no problem can withstand the assault of sustained thinking. I think Jonathan has tackled difficult issues and took up countless hours to trying to devise ways to do things better, more efficiently, and more collaboratively. I thank you for your pensiveness and concern. It's been a true privilege to have had this opportunity to work with trustee Wright, and I thank you for allowing me to serve this community. I wish you all the best.
Motion to approve, yes, please. Just something to remember.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Don't take praise very well. Shall I say some words?
Can we, let us, let us talk to you a little bit more. I just, I want to, Dr. Ceniar did a great job kind of summarizing a lot of stuff that you did. But I just want to thank you for your time, for your passion, and your voice and your representation of our community. And I also wanted to thank Corvita and Monica for supporting you, but also allowing you the time to come here and do the really hard work. The meetings are long and tedious at times, but that's sort of the tip of the iceberg to do this job and do it right. And, you know, we've agreed on a lot of things and disagreed on some. But I felt that we've done really great stuff collectively together as a team, and we've seen some transition of some of those members. But it's really been a pleasure to work with you as a board member, get to know you as a friend. And I really, I wish you the best, and I look forward to you and your family being a part of the Martinez Unified School District in a deeper capacity moving forward and...
Something real quick. We're going to miss you. It's your passion, dedication, and commitment to the school districts is something to behold. And the time and energy you've spent on the district and the schools and all the issues, we are going to miss your passion and your dedication. So thank you so much for serving. Hopefully, at some point in the future, we'll see you in another capacity and around the districts. Thank you, Jonathan.
I'll go next, around. We didn't get to work with you specifically for, in this capacity, for very long, but I do appreciate this time. And I like, I really value your ability to speak calm and be a voice of reason while also adhering to your core values. I think that's really admirable. And I think that you can leave here tonight knowing that you have helped lay the groundwork for Cora Vita and her impending MUSD education. I think you have a lot to be proud of.
Yeah, I'll just echo on everybody else that said, unfortunately, I haven't found to work with you for very long either. But you've always stood out to me as someone that isn't afraid to speak up for what they believe in, which is a very admirable quality. And you, just like all the rest of us, also have a full-time job. And this is a very time-consuming, sometimes challenging volunteer position that you always showed up for. And I know it's not the only way that you have been serving your community. So thank you for everything you've done for the community.
Well, if I may, I didn't prepare any remarks, but that would be unlikely to do so. People often say, wow, you say a lot of words. And they say, I just make it up as I go. For folks who don't know, I'm a labor negotiator by trade. So it's a skill that one has to develop to be able to speak on the fly. I did get to join the board. I was so fortunate to be able to serve as a trustee. I was 35 when I started, and I'm 41 now. We had only moved here from Oakland about a year and a half earlier. And Monica and I have been so blessed to be so welcomed by this community. And part of that, for reasons that are beyond my comprehension, part of being welcomed by the community meant that I had to serve in a leadership role. And that caused me to have to learn a lot more about my adopted hometown more quickly than I think we would have otherwise, although it's still an organic process. And in the intervening years, I've seen how many, what, six classes have graduated from our high schools? To me, that's the most rewarding part of serving on this board is, like I said in our last meeting, everything we do in these rooms is about tomorrow. And that promise of tomorrow, the physical manifestation is that event where we get to tell our graduating seniors, you get to walk on out of here and only come back if you want to. And that's such a gift. Nothing can replace that. About a year and a half ago, I lost a great uncle. His name was Robert Onder. And he lived his entire life in Wisconsin. And he was a wonderful human being, full of a joyous spirit and humor and deep intelligence. And he was a working man and also found time to serve on his city council. And I always thought he was a great role model because he did it just because service is important. And people asked him to do it, so he did it. And that was my approach to being a member of this board. I never sought it out. People came to me and asked me to submit my application. In fact, I was on a family vacation with my parents in Mexico, and people started calling me saying, you need to apply for the position. I said, I've seen the notification on the high school marquee, but that's not for me. Surely, they would want someone who has a kid in the district or who has lived here for eight generations. Not me. And the board, in their infinite wisdom, selected me, and I'm, again, very grateful and picking up all the amazing things that we've done. We passed a bond. We rebuilt our schools, which was a feat in and of itself. And Deirdre, thank you so much for your work on that. And to your family. We re-upped the parcel tax to ensure that we can do our best to keep certain functions functioning and do our best to pay our staff as close to a living wage as possible. This community seems to always be willing to dig deep when it comes to funding education. I hope that this board and future boards remember that, that Martineans are incredibly generous of spirit and heart and of treasure when it comes to our schools. We stood up for the least amongst us. We were one of the first school districts in the region to become a safe haven for immigrant students, for those who would be persecuted by people who have used their power at the federal level to take parents away from their children and to enter school sites for the purpose of taking children away. We said no. We stood up for our transgender students and said, despite what may happen in DC, you will have a right to use facilities of your, that you need to use based on your identity. For that, I'm incredibly proud. And just this past year, something that we'd actually been working on for a long time, but also in reaction to the murder of George Floyd, we passed what I consider to be an outstanding resolution stating that we will be an anti-racist organization. And I've taken many steps to follow that resolution. We have more work to do, but I never intended for all of the citations in that resolution to be enacted overnight. It would be foolish to do so. We have seen so many students come and go and graduate, and we see the staff come and go. And at the same time, we still have these core values that I find myself to be so aligned with. And I know that the same holds true for my whole family. I could go on, but I would say that my most proud achievement is being able to have worked to adopt the project labor agreement easily. By adopting the project labor agreement, at least for Measure Our Construction Projects, and I would strongly encourage this board to amend that project labor agreement to apply permanently to all district construction projects. It has pumped, it has created jobs. It has ensured that the most highly skilled, highly trained tradespeople are working on our construction projects. And you see it in the newly constructed John Muir, and we will see it in the Los Angeles building as well. That's something that I'm incredibly proud of. We are using taxpayer dollars for the best possible use, keeping them here in Martinez by hiring locally. We're supporting contractors who believe in fair pay for fair work and incredibly safe working conditions. We saw a very few cases of tradespeople contracting COVID-19 while working on our construction projects in part, in large part, because of the safety requirements of the project labor. You don't get those kind of safety standards with non-union work. I could go on, but I'm just grateful. I'm grateful to have been able to be here. I would also ask that, moving forward, this board strongly consider a way to allocate resources to create a bilingual education program. It's something that this community needs by not serving the needs of our native Spanish speakers and our students who wish to become more proficient in Spanish would be far better served if we could create a bilingual program. That's something that I wish I could have stuck around to work on. Let's get on with the meeting. I know we have a lot to talk about. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up, we move on to 13.2, which is on COVID-19.
Okay, well, I'm going to start with the good news. We're going to be open for full-time in-person running next year. We'll just start with that, all right? We'll just start with that. Unfortunately, we are still waiting for the CBTH guidance regarding face covering. I know that's a big concern everyone has. Again, fully vaccinated people still must wear face coverings indoors at K-12 schools, childcare, and other youth settings. This may change as soon as we get the CDC-K-12 schools guidance, but we still are not sure when that's going to happen. And so on June 15th, new guidance came forward in the form of a new question and answer format from CBTH. And they're still kind of going through. If I just wanted to read one quick piece from this is specifically focused to children 2 through 11. And again, they're saying that they're required to wear masks indoors. And the guidance is yes, since they are currently eligible for vaccine, and they are therefore unvaccinated. This requirement is subject to forthcoming guidance addressing schools and youth. So I'm sorry, I'm still awaiting that guidance. But at this time, kids that are unvaccinated, adults in the setting are still to wear masks. But we're going to be back full-time in person, and as soon as any information comes out, I will send that to everyone.
Okay. Hopefully Sacramento can figure it out sooner than later until we get any guidance before we start school.
I do have a question. So is it everyone who steps foot on our campuses? Or is it just when they're indoor? And I asked that specifically at our secondary. We're, at the high school, everyone should be eligible to be vaccinated. So is it possible that once our kids, once our staff leave the classroom or any closed space during the passing period, if they're eating, if they're taking their lunch outside, any of those things coming in and out of campus, are they able to remove their masks?
And the guidance I believe is forthcoming on that. Definitely at the second. It's interesting that they're kind of in the new question and answer. They're specifically leading out the secondary level for this because they do have the ability to be vaccinated. Again, they're saying, in general, unvaccinated children and youth do not need to wear a mask outdoors, even if they cannot maintain physical distancing. And they're saying, however, per CDC recommendations, if we're in an area of extremely high transmission, people who are not fully vaccinated are encouraged to wear a mask in crowded outdoor settings. So I think the guidance is going to become more lenient, especially around outside settings. In addition to that, Caloche is kind of working on two different situations for a school setting. A school setting when children are present and a school setting when children are not present. So when it's just adults in the room, then it'll be a different set of guidelines. And adults that are fully vaccinated can take off their masks. But that is only when children are not present. So when we get all the guidance, we'll make some nice charts and have everybody kind of understand the two differences between when children are present and when they are not.
And which governing body are we waiting to hear about from? It's not the county anymore. We're waiting on the state?
Yes, so CDC, once CDC makes their K-12 recommendations, CBTH will jump onto that bandwagon and fix all their issues, and then they will share that out with our local health officials. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We'll open up for public comments. Any public comments on agenda item 13.2? We have one, Jenna. Without a mute, for some reason, I can't see your last name, but go ahead and introduce yourself. You'll have to read. You have three minutes, Jenna. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you can hear me. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to voice my concern and opinion and just say that I don't want my child to be masked, and I don't really want to tolerate masks for children. I highly think it's not safe for children to be masked. So I just want to express that to the board.
Okay, thank you, Jenna.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Alex. Alex Boyd, introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Alex Vazquez, and I'm a parent at MUSD. During the last board meeting, I spoke out against mandatory masks in schools and explained why my child will not comply if such a requirement exists in the fall. This was met with hostility and more of the same politics, misinformation, and hysteria that I warned about. For example, when I said the flu is more dangerous to kids than COVID, I base that on what it says on the CDC's website. You can look this up yourself at cdc.gov/flu/symptoms/flu-versus-covid19.html. Scroll down to where it says in plain English, "For young children, especially children younger than five years old, the risk of serious complications is higher for the flu compared with COVID-19." That's a direct quote. And the CDC bases this statement on evidence from their own pediatric influenza surveillance system, where it's demonstrated that the flu kills more children during a typical flu season than COVID has within the same period of time. And these COVID numbers are even lower if you consider that the CDC also published a report showing that a third of COVID deaths in children have no plausible connection to COVID at all. I provided the links for all this information to the board, and it's directly from the CDC in case you still think that I'm spreading misinformation. I don't think children's risk to COVID can get any clearer than that. Yet some of the parents in the district will still choose to ignore this reality because they've been traumatized to believe otherwise. I can understand how people have been manipulated, but when it comes to my kid, I'm not going to allow other people's ignorance to drive my decisions as a parent. I've done my due diligence and can assess my child's risk based on official data from medical institutions. Teachers, you should be able to assess your risk as well. All school staff will be vaccinated by the fall. Why do children need to wear masks? If the CDC says that the flu is more dangerous to children, then it's certainly not to protect the kids unless we've been doing it wrong every flu season prior to 2020. And if school staff are vaccinated, then it certainly is not to protect the teachers. So why would anyone support mandatory masking? Oh, right, because of politics, misinformation, and hysteria, just like when we senselessly kept schools closed for nothing. So we're back to my original point about mandatory masking in the fall. I will not allow you to force my kid to wear a mask for viruses less dangerous to children than the flu. I also will not allow you to force my kid to wear a mask because you think it will protect vaccinated adults. I will not comply, and I encourage every other parent to do the same. All the arguments otherwise are nonsense, and there's no evidence to support them. Maybe that's why over half the country is abandoning universal masking in schools. Take the mask off your child. This has nothing to do with being a good person or showing you care. This is about reality, and the reality is that kids do not need to wear a mask in the fall of 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Next up will be Tina Sherwin. Tina, go ahead and introduce yourself. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Hello? Hi. Yeah, the CDC website contains guidance from May 15th, and it's only for this past school year. What is frustrating is that the CDC's own website contradicts itself by saying masking is required for K through 12, but also has a paragraph saying, "Fully vaccinated people can resume activities that they did prior to the pandemic with no masks." So which is it, CDC? Science now shows that transmission in schools is between adults and doesn't involve children. And these studies took place prior to vaccines. Given the high vaccination rates in our county, we are reaching population immunity. Teachers don't have to fear getting COVID from students, provided teachers are vaccinated. If a teacher chooses to not be vaccinated, that is their choice, and they can also choose to wear a mask if they want to. I am pro-vaccine and pro-choice myself, but there is no evidence that masks work. The vaccines even work against the Delta variant. Other countries who are instituting more lockdowns don't have a 70% plus vaccination rate for people 12 and up like we do in our county. And we have incredibly low case numbers and low hospitalizations. What makes no sense is that my 16-year-old could get a full-time summer job, working eight hours a day, and not have to wear a mask to work, but then return to school in the fall and be forced to wear a mask? Please explain the logic in that. The further away we get from the June 15 reopening and the June 17 masking update for workers, the fewer and fewer masks you see on people. Please observe people around Martinez at stores and the farmer's market, and notice, week to week this summer, there are less and less masks. Let's make smiles normal again. Thank you.
Jenna, next up will be Casey Borlow. When I mute you, you'll have three minutes. Hold on, Casey. Go ahead, Casey.
Hi, my name is Casey. I'm speaking tonight to inform the board that my children will not be wearing masks to school next year. This isn't March 2020. We have well over a year of worldwide data that shows healthy children have a negligible risk of complications from the virus. It is time to allow people to be responsible for their own health. And if parents continue to be so afraid of their children getting COVID-19, despite all of the current data available, then it is time for them to make other plans for their children's education. It is not okay to demand other people make important decisions based on some parents' irrational fears. The board members have made comments that you're all following the state guidance. However, you actually are not as you've kept the summer school kids masked outdoors even though the CDC and State of California has said it is not needed. You took the easy way out instead of updating the district's protocols. You also allowed in your contracts with the teachers' union to not allow children on the playgrounds when the state and county have said children can, in fact, play on the play structures. You continue to fail our kids because it is easier to do so than to renegotiate your contracts. I would like to know where we stand as a district. What is the plan? Are you planning to follow the state's lead when it is announced? Or are you going to be signed into new contracts requiring students to be masked before the guidelines are official? Are you ready to make immediate changes as the guidance comes forth? Are you ready to make immediate changes as the guidance comes forth? Thank you.
Okay, see, next up will be Janine Kelly. Janine, why, unmute you, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Janine. David, are you able to unmute her?
Let's see. Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. Hi, I'm a parent of two kids in this district as well, and like the others have said before, I also do not want my children masked. With all due respect, this is not March 2020 anymore. Vaccines are readily available to any adult that wants it. Study after study has shown that children are more affected by the seasonal flu than they are COVID-19. And do you know what else the studies are showing? Between April and October 2020, there was a 25% increase in mental health emergency visits for children 5 to 11 compared with the previous year. They're showing that if a mask becomes even slightly saturated, it loses what little efficiency it had to begin with after 20 minutes. They're showing that mask-wearing imperfectly, as our children undoubtedly will, is actually harmful to them. I am not asking you to take mask-wearing away from those who deem it necessary. I am demanding the choice as the parent to do what I feel is best for my child. Our children have been through enough, and now you want to deprive them of oxygen, ban them from playing on the playground, fill them with fear and anxiety, reprimand them if they touch each other, interact with each other for six hours a day? You are forcing them to carry a burden that should not be placed on them. How many wonderful families did our district lose last year due to the failings of this board to push for reopening? How many more do you think you will lose if you choose to make our schools more like a prison and less like a place where our children can learn and be nurtured and just be kids? It is time to stand up and do what is right for the sake of these kids. If masks are justified for these children, it is now your responsibility to prove it to us, the parents, because I know for one, I am fed up and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Next up will be Kelly Gilbert. Kelly, unmute you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I'm a parent at Morello Park. I've just simply come on here to say that if masks are mandated, I will be looking into pulling my children out of the district. It's a little ridiculous at this point to be asking our kids to put masks on, especially outside on the playgrounds, and to not even know by now if kids are going to be allowed on playgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next up will be Amanda F. Amanda, go ahead and introduce yourself. Unmute you. You have three minutes. Go ahead, Amanda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, I am a parent of two elementary students. I wanted to speak out today against masking our children, masking our healthy children, treating them like they are a health threat. There has been numerous studies done showing that harmful effects, what harmful effects masks can do. You say you listen to the science, and the science is clear, masks do not work. Children are the least affected, and we shouldn't treat them like they're walking viruses and create more fear. If you look at several other states, public schools have been allowed to open and have removed masks with no increase in cases. Being a school should have them feeling safe and happy and want to hug their friends and their teachers, but instead, what you are doing is making them feel like they need to be afraid of their friends, teachers, and afraid of a virus that has 99.9% survival rate for their age. If the teachers are being, are able to be vaccinated, then I don't see why our children should have to be masked. If you truly believe your vaccine works, then masking our children should not be an issue. I hope you realize what you are doing to these kids and that you reconsider the mask requirements. If some parents prefer to mask their kids, then go right ahead. All I ask for is the choice, and I will not be masking my children for school.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. Jenna, you'll be up next. Jenna, when I unmute you, you have three minutes. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Go ahead, Jenna.
Hi, my name is Jenna. I have two kids in the district, and I'm just here to say exactly the same thing that everyone has already said. Our children should not be wearing masks. There, there are so many studies that exactly the reason that our kids should not be wearing masks, and they are so low risk for the teachers, for everyone, they should not be wearing a mask. And I have a child that has asthma, and I have a doctor's note, and he still does not want to wear no mask because he's the only one that would be non-masked. So like the mental health with our kids is the most important thing. And exactly what I think Jenna said is, we lost so many great families this past year because of us not going back to school and us, our kids, being masked. Like, how many more are gonna, are gonna walk away as well? Our kids need to go back full-time and unmasked. It's absolutely absurd. And especially, my kid's at summer school right now. He has to wear a mask outside on the playground. They can't even play on the playground when at CDC says you can be outside unmasked. So it's, it doesn't make any sense. But these kids need to be thought about, and they need to be unmasked.
Thank you, Jenna. Tom Varro will be up next. Hold on, Tom. I'll get it. There you go. Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks, Jeremy. So I want to be clear. I absolutely 100% agree with everything that's been stated at this point. One of the things that remains unclear and has been the case since March of 2020 is who's actually in control and who, who is making our decisions. Regardless of where policy goes, CDC, the state, the school district, et cetera, one of the things that I think needs to be very clear in whatever our plans are for getting kids back on campus in the fall is, if we have a significant number of kids, including my own, who arrive on school campuses without masks or work with their doctors to get exemptions in high percentages, how are we going to manage those kids? My understanding is that we will not have a hybrid environment similar to the one that we ended the school year with, and we're talking about leaving an option for some kiddos in independent study. But if 10, 20, 30, 40% of this school district's kiddos work with their physicians to get exemptions for wearing masks to school, what is our plan? Thank you.
Next up, Elaine will be up next. You'll have three minutes. When I unmute you, go ahead and introduce yourself. Enjoy, Elaine.
Hi, my name is Elaine Mano. I have two children in the school district. I just want to echo what everyone has been saying. Our kids are not at high risk for severe illness. They're at higher risk for severe illness from the flu than COVID. It's been proven time and time again. Everybody who is at risk or, you know, has health issues and is an adult has had the opportunity to get it at this point. So if you're vaccinated, you know, you should be fine. In my opinion, I think that the biggest thing right now is to have choice, that people should be able to make the choice of whether or not they're comfortable with their children not in a mask or if they want for their family that they're going to be remained masked. I think that last year plus has been us not having any choices. And I think that's a really huge aspect of this as a parent, not feeling like we have a choice is a big issue. And also, the mental health side effects of this is, you know, we'll have to wait to see how long this lasts for. I have one child that seemingly is okay and another one who, no matter where we go, thinks that we have to put a mask on even when we're outside, and it's totally safe to remain unmasked. And that's, it's hard to watch, and it's hard to explain why he doesn't need to do this. So I, I feel like in the past couple of weeks since the mask mandate has been lifted in the, in, you know, the state, it's been nice to see that people, more and more people are choosing to wear their mask or not wear their mask, but people are becoming more comfortable with it. I think that is the first step with this. And that being said is, we just need the choice for our children to do what we think is best for our children. I am worried that more people will continue to leave the school district. I'm right there. If we can't get what we need, we, we have to go because we can't do another year like we did. So I, I thank everyone for their efforts. Thanks.
Thank you, Elaine. And looks like we have one more. Robbie, go ahead and introduce yourself. You'll have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
So I just want to say what everyone else is saying. Everyone seems to have pretty much the same idea that masks pretty much should be the choice of the parents, and that we're basically restricting our kids from being outside and playing and being kids. And to be honest, I mean, just listening to you guys talk and the responses to the parents, it, to be honest, it sounds like you guys really don't care what we have to say, and you're going to do what you want anyway, you know? And I think, I mean, this meeting's had a lot of voices all saying the exact same thing, which is pretty much, it should be up to the parents. We parent our kids. We know how to parent them. Leave it to us. And the whole state, the whole county is unmasked, and everything's good everywhere else. You can go to the gym, no mask. You can go to Waterworld, no mask. You go to any theme park, no mask. But you can't go to school and play outside unless you're wearing a mask. To me, that's just ridiculous. And again, I really don't know how much of a difference this is going to make because it really sounds, I mean, you guys did what you wanted last year, right? When other schools, other counties, other states went back to school, you forced our kids to stay home for no reason. When other states went back and the cases were still dropping and the kids were unmasked. So it just makes no sense that we are the oddball out, and we have to follow what you say, and it really sounds like you guys do not care what any other parents have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Robbie. Next up will be Andrea Ternez.
Sorry, Mr. President. Can we do a time check because we're really supposed to do 20 minutes for both comments for each agenda item. And I believe I succeeded 20 minutes.
That is, that is correct. David, do you have any idea how long we've gone?
Yeah, we've gone over 20 minutes.
How many more do we have? I'm not trying to just finish this and have to bring it back up.
Y'all gonna say the same crap? Oh, I'm sorry, same stuff?
It looks like it's, Jenna's already spoken, so there's, there's two left.
There's two left. I would, I mean, I would prefer that we finish this, this audit together. Yeah.
Okay, Andrea, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes. So I'll keep this quickly. But I just want to say that I'm supporting the parent stance here on, you know, allowing us to have the choice whether or not our, our children should have a mask on or not. Obviously, you know, it's very clear that, you know, the mask mandate has been lifted. However, we're still requiring our children to wear a mask. Not only is it not allowing us to have a choice based on our children, these are our children, it's the fact that just socially, emotionally, mentally, the effects that it's having on these kids. Yeah, and all we want is the best future for them and for them to be comfortable to go back to school and to continue on, you know, growing and, you know, flourishing in this great, you know, neighborhood and school district that we have. But for this to be, you know, basically not giving us a choice and saying that we have, you know, no say in anything, you know, it, it's just not the right message to send at all. And honestly, if there's, you know, all these studies and recommendations and everything else that prove the fact that we don't need it, it just doesn't make sense that we would require our children, and our poor children at this point, to, you know, to be required to wear the masks. So that's all, and thank you.
Andrea, in the last public comments under this item will be Davi Mata. Go ahead and, go ahead.
I'm here. Sorry, I had, sorry, do you hear me?
Yeah, that's probably my fault.
Okay, okay. I apologize. I, I just tuned in, so I apologize if this has been said before, but I'll be brief. First of all, I'm, I'm just, with the sma, the mask mandate, I'm wondering at what point did the N95 mask not become the gold standard? Because in my opinion, surgical masks and cotton masks and all of these various masks are, are not doing anything for protecting anyone that's at risk. I think rather, it should be those that want to protect themselves be supplied with N95 masks. I realize your hands are tied, but I think what would be fantastic is something I saw that was done in Orange County. And I'll read just a section. It says, "On Thursday, June 24, the Board of Education adopted resolution, 23, whatever, requesting that the California Department of Public Health remove the mask mandate and allow masks to be optional. For the 21-22 school year, the district will follow the guidelines and recommendations issued by Cal OSHA, CDPH, and the Orange County Healthcare Agency. As reflected through this board resolution, the district would like the mask mandate to be optional." I think that is an excellent move on behalf of that district to speak to the needs of the parents. At least have a voice and say, "This is our preference." Because if we don't speak out, just like these parents are speaking out tonight, then decisions are going to be made without any consultation or any reflection about, of, of what parents and students need day to day. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring you back to the board. Any comments from the board?
I'm going to ask the same question, Mr. President, that I did last meeting. Dr. Seeger and Ms. Rossi, have we at any time, as a, as a district, said that we are going to go beyond the state requirements for masking or not masking when we resume in-person instruction in the fall?
We have not.
And can I also get a reminder, were we not one of the first districts to bring students back to in-person instruction when we were allowed to do so compared to other districts in the county? Because my memory is that we were, and I just want to make sure I don't have a faulty memory.
We were.
And someone said something about, "We refuse to reopen when other states were reopening." Are we in the state of California? I just want to make sure that we're in the state of California. Right? Okay, I know the answer. We're in the state of California. The state of California sets the rules. It comes from the legislature and the California Department of Public Health and the California Department of Education. Have we ever at any time gone above and beyond the requirements of the California Department of Public Health and the California Department of Education?
With the exception of the current MOU with the outside wearing of masks, no, we have not.
And that MOU expires at the end of this month, right?
Correct.
And when we resume school in the fall, do we have any plans to mandate that students wear masks when they do not wish to be wearing masks?
No. If the guidance has changed and allows for students not to wear face covering, then we will adhere to those guidelines.
So I think I already said, when the guy, if, if the guidance changes, and when the guidance changes, then we will adopt those guidance as they are provided to us. So if any of the folks who felt the need to say all those things that you said over the last half hour, feel the need to continue to be on our meeting, which I hope that you are, because you made us listen to whatever you had to say, we're not doing what you think we're doing. And to make accusations that we don't care about your kids, what the hell do you think we're doing here? The gloves are off, folks. It's my last meeting. So really, you know, you're just going to see me around here. If you don't like what I have to say, welcome to reach out to me as a private citizen. But the fact is, this district has gone above and beyond to bring students back safely, to bring students back to in-person instruction when neighboring districts were not able to get their act together to do it. And you want to complain about this? This is what you have to, to do with your time? Orange County had the second highest number of fatalities from COVID-19. Why on God's green earth would you compare us to Orange County? Enough.
All right, well, let me take it different approach. And let me just start by saying, for most of the things, I totally agree. I don't want my kids to have to wear masks to school. That's why I've been trying to ask if there's any loopholes because any chance that we can get five minutes of being unmasked? I mean, I've talked to students myself who are at the high school and junior high, and the difference between taking it off in between classes just to smile at your friends is just a complete deal. I mean, that, they would think that that's a gift. I, I would like to, you know, I, I like the idea of a resolution. Unfortunately, we're not going to be back for, and I don't think it's appropriate to have a special meeting to do a resolution. But I would at least like to voice my public support in doing everything that we can legally possibly do within the laws of the State of California and, and their governing bodies to get our kids back to school maskless in the greatest capacity we can. I, I think that's great that some parents are going to say, "I want my kids wearing masks," and they should be able to do that. And we are going to have to find a way to emotionally support those kids and families as well as addressing what it's going to mean for our students if they do have to come back masked because the, you know, a legislature or a, a, a health agency makes those decisions. I think the hard thing for us is that, as a district, we're not, we're not a health department. And so we have to take the guidance and the recommendations because that's also who funds us. And I, I feel for the parents being frustrated, and I, I applaud people being advocates for their kids. You know, all of us here are parents, and we see what this has done to them. It's also made us all a little bit crazy. So I would, I'd like to see if we can kind of challenge, challenge us to kind of work together to do this. And it sounds like we need a little more patience, Julie. They're asking us for more patience. I don't think we have a choice in that. They're asking us for more patience. I don't think we have a choice in that. But, you know, I, I, I'm personally committed to seeing whatever we can do to get through the hoops to, to get as many kids with their, to be maskless in our classes. I just think it's the best thing for them.
I, I want to echo what Deidre just said. And this is a good opportunity to reach out to your state representatives and voice these opinions to them as well because, you know, that's where we're getting the items from, is the state, A of the CBC, so, you know.
It's not good enough.
Correct, it's mandatory, but, but reach out to them because we would like to see the, the kiddos on campus with our masks on. So reach out to your state representatives, folks. Any other comments you have?
I just want to say, you know, I agree with what everybody has said. And to say that the people in this room don't care about the kids, we spend hours every week, like I said earlier to Jonathan, this is a volunteer job. We're not paid to be here. And we spend hours and hours talking about things like the budget, which is really important. That's how we get teachers and facilities and playgrounds. And we're gonna do that later today, too. We did that last meeting where I think we maybe had five or six parents total that attended. So I understand this is an important issue. It is, it's important to me, too. And I'm thrilled that my kid's gonna be able to go back to school in the fall full-time. So we're gonna do the best we can, but like Jeremy just said, we cannot say no masks if the state tells us they have to have them. So, but right now, we're gonna talk about other stuff like the budget, which is gonna allow us to do some reported things in the fall to try to make up for some things that we all had to endure the last year. So I really hope, hope that those of you that have strong feelings will stick around and make comments and show that you care about those types of things, too. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 13.3. And Amy Black will be presenting. Stay tuned, Amy.
Thank you. Good evening, President Giannelli, members of the board. This evening, I'm gonna share a brief presentation on our local indicators. So may pull up the slide deck real quick. Sorry, it's, okay. Okay, so the California Dashboard. We haven't really had the opportunity to talk much about the California Dashboard with school closures. As a result of school closures, in March of 2020, the CDE decided to postpone the, not only the state testing, but also reporting out on local indicators and renewing our LCAP. So we are now back on track. In the past, if you remember or part of any of the past California Dashboard presentations, typically this presentation is given in the fall. However, with the new LCAP and the new LCAP template, the CDE is asking for us to share our local indicators when we bring our LCAP goals forward to you in the month of June. So I'm bringing it to you now, even though we don't formally report it to the state until November. So when I talk about local indicators, the California Dashboard has eight priorities or eight indicators that were required to analyze and measure. Several of them are state-collected indicators that we collect through CALPads, and that would include our Sback or CAS testing, our suspension rate, our chronic absentee. Those are all state indicators. And then we have five local indicators where the state asks us to measure them locally, reflect on them, share them publicly. And by doing that, those three things, or sharing them with the board, monitoring our progress. And then, I forget, it was my third one, we look at it, sorry. Sharing with the board, and then also uploading our results on the dashboard in November. Then it, we show a met requirement. So our local data, you, you basically, when we look at our indicators, they're based on three criteria: met, not met, or not met for two or more years. The local indicators inform our California Dashboard along with our state indicators. These eight indicators also are required to be reported out and reflected in our LCAP. So you'll also see the eight indicators through our, our new LCAP. And then the LCAP informs our site plans, our school plan for student achievement. And we brought those to the board a few months ago, and they were reflective of our past LCAP goals. So when we bring them to you in the 2021-22 school year, you will see they will align with our new LCAP goals. So the state indicators that we'll see on the California Dashboard, you'll see number one is condition, there are the conditions of learning. If you see an asterisk by it, it indicates a local indicator, and I'll be reporting out on it this evening. Priority two is implementation of state standards, local indicator. Priority three is parent involvement, how we engage our parents. That's a local indicator. Priority four is student achievement. That's a state indicator, so that's our Sback and CAS tests. Our student engagement, that is related to student suspension, chronic absenteeism. So it's a state indicator. Our school climate is priority six. That's a local indicator. Priority seven is course access. That's a local indicator. And then priority eight is outcomes. So you'll see, that's a state indicator. Typically, it's graduation rate and college and career readiness indicator that is put on our dashboard. So our first local indicator that I need to report on tonight is our basic services. And so it's a reflection tool the state asks us to complete. It asks us that a percentage of misaligned teachers serving our English learner, and in the 2020-21 school year, we had zero. Number or percentage of students without access to their own copies of materials, that was zero. And then this has to do with our facilities, good repair. That's all listed in the SARC templates, and those were brought to the board for review, I believe, in December, January. And they're available on our website. And of our sites, of all our sites reported, we have two that have met good repair, but also, as referenced this evening, board, the bond and facilities. We are in process of rebuilding or repairing the identified needs of those facilities. So overall, this indicator is gonna be, it's noted as met. Our second priority is our implementation of state standards. This, again, is a reflection tool. There's a rating scale that's used, and the rating scale is actually in the reference section for your review. I'm not gonna review it this evening, but it's there for your reference. So we annually review and measure our, our process in implementing our California State Standard academic. And the rating scale is based on a one through five scale, exploration to number five, full implementation and sustainability. We don't have to be a number five to show met. We just have to show that we're monitoring our progress and reporting out on it, and that's what we've done each year required to, so we are, will be reporting met on that indicator. State priority three, parent engagement. So we're required to seek measures, to seek input from our parents. We do that through building relationships, our student outcomes and decision makings. So just some of the indicators that we use to collect this data, we use the CHKS. Stands for the California Healthy Kids Survey. That is something that we're required to give every two years, but we actually choose to do it every year. We survey our parents in fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade every year. In this 2020-21 school year, we had a total of 407 participants. We also engage our parents through our formal LCAP survey. So we surveyed our parents this year in getting response at each level, also high school, middle school, and elementary school to give feedback on our new goals that are presented. And then also, we had 319 participants in that survey, and they represented every grade level and every school site. And then we review our results of those. And then we also look at SIPSA's as well and what schools are doing to collect and engage information from their parents. And so based on, on those factors, we've met this indicator. State priority six is our school climate. So this is also connected to our California Healthy Kids Survey. We administer this survey every year to our students in fifth, seventh, ninth, and 11th grade. In the 2020-21 school year, we had a total of 875 secondary students that participated and 166 fifth-grade students that participated in the survey. There is a very comprehensive survey. It's available online through Data Quest. I don't, I'm not sure if the 2021 has been uploaded yet, but you can definitely see our past results. And we will be analyzing past and current results with our site leaders in the fall and with staff. A couple of the categories I picked out in related to the indicator are looking at safe schools. How do, how do students feel? Do they feel safe at school? And you can see the percentage that reported that they agree or strongly agree that they feel safe at school. So the percentages are listed below, 88% fifth, 59% seventh, 64% ninth, 62% and 11th. School, reporting out on school connectedness. Do they feel connected at school? And then do they feel that they have a caring adult that they can go to with the percentages across the board? Again, by servant, service, surveying our students and analyzing the data and reporting it out, we've met that indicator. And then state priority seven, access to broad courses of study. So we have to annually measure our progress to which students have access to and enrolled in broad courses of study. So that can include our A to G courses, our AP courses, how many students are in CTE coursework. So these are all the areas that we look at. We look at elementary and middle school courses of study, but more significantly at our high school data. And we have tables that are listed in the reference section as well. So this category is also met in our local indicator. So I went through that super fast. I just wanted to see if you have any questions or reflections or comments. Next steps in this, in these indicators is that they will be uploaded and reported to the CDE in November. And then it will be compiled with our state data from this past fall to create our report card or our dashboard. And the way that it's broken down, it's actually on CA Dashboard, I think, dot com or dot org. It's a CDE website, and then you're able to, or public or parents, stakeholders are able to access all our data. You can look at it by our LEA, by MUSD, or you can look at it by your, look at it by individual school sites to be able to tweeze down exactly how your individual school, your student or child's school is scoring on the dashboard. So all this information leads to that and also informs our LCAP goals. So any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Doesn't look like it. Let's open up our public comments. Any public comments under Agenda Item 13.3? It doesn't look like it, so we'll bring you back to the board. Any questions before the presentation? Thank you so much, Amy, for the presentation. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14. This is public comments. Under Government Code 54954.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. This one time is allowed at the end of the meeting. If there was not enough time to speak during public comments. And I just want to remind everybody, this is a 20-minute session. Each speaker has three minutes, so keep your comments, give one or three minutes. And we'll start with, Peter, for some reason, I can't see your last name, so I'll go ahead and introduce this all. Go ahead, Peter. David, I can't, I can't unmute here for some reason. Okay, hold on.
Hello?
Oh, there it goes. Hold on. Sorry, Peter, that's what's...
All right, so sorry. All right. I'm, I'm, my name is Peter Crowley. I'm a 25-year resident of Martinez, 15 years in the school district. I'm also the boys' volleyball coach at Alhambra or have been for years. I was called back during this special COVID season. And I was just especially surprised by the dismissal of Pat Artola. And, I mean, he did a remarkable job this spring with coordinating the 18 different teams, you know, 10 out, 10 outside and eight indoors. And I've always had a good relationship with him. He's always been very helpful with any of the issues I've ever had to deal with. So I was hoping to encourage the board to consider his reinstatement before the fall. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter. Next up will be Bob Holsinger. Bob, go ahead.
There we go. All right, sorry. Was waiting for it to let me unmute. Bob Holsinger, I've been teaching at Alhambra High School for 20 years, physical education and math. I, I know you're all aware of my feelings about the need to reinstate Pat Artola because I've written emails to all of you and thanked the several people who did respond, Anne and Deidra and Matt and Helen, acknowledging my, my thoughts. I, I just want to say separately from that, because you, you know my thoughts there, that we all make mistakes. And I think the best thing to do has been shown, national elections right down to local things, to even relationships within our family. The best thing to do when you make a mistake is to apologize, try to fix what's gone wrong, and try to move forward and not make the same mistake again. And I know Julie is new to the district, and I feel she's probably just gotten the wrong steer from some people. And hopefully, when she hears all of the information from those of us who support Pat, she will realize that she's made a mistake. And I would applaud her if she steps from that, steps back from that for a moment and realizes, "Hey, I need to fix this," and admits the mistake and fixes it and gets Pat back in his job and moves forward. He has done more for our school arguably than anyone at the school in the 15 years that he's been there. Way beyond the job of an athletic director, although he does that job extremely well as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bob. Next up will be Anthony Artola. Anthony, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, guys. My name's Anthony Artola. I'm a, sorry, I needed to mute to turn down my volume. I'm a PE teacher and assistant coach of the varsity football and boys' basketball teams at Alhambra. I'm a graduate of Alhambra, resident of MUSD, and yes, the son of recently removed athletic director Pat Artola. I'm reaching out today to express my concerns and the decision to remove Pat from his position after 26 years of committed service to our school district, including the last 16 as the athletic director. I realize he's my dad, and this will be taken with a grain of salt. I hope that who I am can also offer a unique perspective with someone who's spent more time with him on this campus behind the scenes than anyone else over the length of his tenure. Pat is as dedicated a servant to our community as anyone I've ever seen. All Pat ever wants to do is what's best for the student athlete, never asking for anything in return. Even during the unprecedented COVID athletic season, as he watched other districts publicly acknowledge their athletic directors for all their hard work, he continued to advocate for the thanking of our coaches and their families, never putting himself within that group that he felt should be acknowledged. Sadly, those pleased to administration or gratitude fell on deaf ears, and his reward was his removal from the position. All Pat has ever wanted to do was help. In fact, the very nature of how he ended up in both his positions came from simply wanting to be a support. After leaving Campolino High School in 1995, he was ready to take a break from coaching and spend time with his family. Alhambra reached out to see if he might be willing to, quote-unquote, "help out a struggling basketball team." And as the school kept asking more of him, he delivered, taking over as co-head coach and eventually sole head coach, despite my mother's initial reservations, within two to three years, turning a once-dormant program into a league champion and playoff contender. In 2004, Alhambra was without an athletic director, and again, Pat stepped up in an interim role when nobody else would do it. It became evident quickly that he enjoyed it. With some urging from the principal, they stripped the title of interim from his role. My point is, whenever Alhambra needs something, whether it's athletics-related or not, Pat has answered the call. I spent many nights as a child and into my adult life helping my dad pick up trash, set up and take down school functions such as dances, scholarship nights, even graduations, and countless sporting events easily into the thousands. He's been the Bulldogs' biggest fan on and off the field. I'm proud of my father and the work that he's put in, for pennies on the dollar, I might add. And I'm not ashamed to say that I know he... For pennies on the dollar, I might add, and I'm not ashamed to say that I know he deserves better. Last, I'd just like to share a few concerns as we move into the summer, continue into the summer. First and foremost, how do we move forward from this? You've seen tonight what a polar, or you will see tonight what a polarizing topic this is. How do we unite and pursue a common goal? How do coaches feel supported and not the next people on the chopping block? Are the athletic director seats vacant? Who will fulfill those duties? Most don't realize the amount of work that is done over the summer to prepare for the upcoming season. We have five open coping, five open coaching positions. Game day operations volunteers we need to find, order buses for away games, ordering equipment, check athlete clearances, check coaching clearances, confirm practicing game schedules. That's just a snapshot of what happens in July when most people are on vacation. As someone who's born and raised in Martinez, I love my town, my school, my community. I'm proud to be a Bulldog. Put simply, I want better for our students. I want better for our town, our district, and I want better for Pat. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Next up will be Andrea. Andrea, can I unmute you? You have three minutes. And then go ahead and introduce yourself. Go ahead, Andrea.
Hi, my name is Andrea Salis. I'm a teacher at Alhambra High School. It is with shock, but not surprise, that I learned of the abrupt firing of Pat Ratola, a member of the Alhambra community for over twenty-five years. It came as no surprise because as many of the longtime leaders of this district have either been let go or left on their own accord over the years, we have filled those vacant positions with management, people who, with no long-term commitment to this district or the people who serve it. These are managers with no history of the community, its politics, or its small-town relationships. They are managers who don't even have the decency to call their own employees to offer their support or condolences in a time of need, whether it's due to an illness or as with Pat, because they have just been fired. They may be hiding behind their bosses, but we still see you. You've probably already heard about Pat's willingness to go above and beyond for anybody, his devotion to the athletic program and his possession of an actual spine to deal with the yearly barrage of complainers. In fact, it is Pat's ability to look at the big picture objectively and support those he manages regardless of how loud the calls of the unruly mob bar that make him a leader. He would never, for instance, invite a ninety-minute bitch session about his coaches without also inviting other community members who might have something different to say. He also wouldn't entertain spurious claims that would disappear in the light of day once those making them were pressed for specifics or proof. But I guess if you're the management and you're trying to show leadership without any regard for the truth and without regard to who gets hurt in the process, that's exactly what you do. You empower the mob. The irony here is that Pat wasn't even the main target of the mob, although having his head served on a platter will surely satisfy a little of the bloodthirst. What his firing actually does is more significant. It sends a message that anyone who steps into that athletic director position better not entertain any notion about having their own agency. It sends a message that no matter how many hours you spend during the day, evenings and weekends, ensuring that our wonderful Alhambra athletics program runs smoothly, no matter how much you put yourself in harm's way, breaking up fights among athletes and parents, no matter how many years you give it your all for a grand total of nine thousand dollars per year, you are disposable. It also says to certain community members that all you have to do is demand to speak to the manager and you'll be guaranteed that someone's head will roll. I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank you, Pat, for all the years you've served our school and our district. Thank you for always having a kind word and for helping me during those few times I let stress get the best of me. You were there to step in to do things that might seem minor to other people, like arranging my desks or mopping my floor. I remember that, but they were a major comfort to me at the time. Most of all, thank you for being a strong leader whose words match his actions. At least you can crawl out from under the bus. Thank you.
Next up will be Denise Fuller. Denise, go ahead. There you go, Denise. Any, any on the other Denise?
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
There you go, Denise.
Hello, thank you. All right, here we go. Hi, I'm Denise Fuller and I'm an art teacher at Alhambra High School. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the art department at Alhambra High School to inform you of the elimination of the Measure Q parcel tax funding for the AHS art program. The elimination of this funding occurred at the end of the twenty nineteen twenty school year. Thanks to the Martinez Community Foundation, who provided a one-time grant, we were able to purchase supplies for our students this past year. Earlier, we emailed every board member and attached a presentation outlining the history of the parcel tax, the one-point-three percent of the overall revenue that is allotted to the AHS art program, and the parcel tax language that states Measure Q will protect art and music programs. Since the original passage of the parcel tax in two thousand and eight, the art program at AHS has consistently received ten thousand dollars. This fund directly supplies students with the necessary materials and equipment needed to succeed. Although the material supplies and number of students has increased through the years, the funding from the parcel tax has remained the same. Ten thousand dollars is not sufficient to fund the AHS arts program on its own. We supplement the budget in family, with family donations, grants, and our own personal materials and equipment every year to make up the shortfall. In addition, we have continually modified our curriculum to reduce costs. You will hear from the district of a student software license fee that is not relevant to this issue. That was a one-time fee necessary for distance learning and is no longer needed for the upcoming school year with in-person classes. The district was informed of this months ago. You will hear from the district that we are request, that they are requesting an itemized list of supply costs for all art lessons taught at AHS, which is also not relevant to this issue. The district already approves all itemized purchase orders for the art classes. You will hear that the art department is the only department at AHS that is complaining about a loss of funding. To our knowledge, the arts and music programs are the only AHS programs specified as being protected through Measure Q funding. And finally, you will hear from the district that the original ten thousand dollar budget that was established in two thousand and eight is excessive, when in reality, we have to write grants, ask for donations, and use our own personal materials, equipment, and money to supplement the tax funding. We are asking the board to ensure that the parcel tax is in alignment with the promises made to the voters of Martinez and continues to fund the AHS art program as it was intended to do. We are also asking the board to direct the district to meet with the AHS art department teachers to resolve the parcel tax funding issue, since our questions to the district have gone unanswered since.
Thank you.
Next up will be A. Benz. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I am A. Benz. I have children at the high school. I am too here to speak to all of you. Thank you for continuing to show up, board members and Dr. Senyard, and make those hard decisions, especially after what we've been through last school year. I commend your bravery at making changes when some people want things to stay the same. Some people want things to stay the same because they benefit from the status quo. At this time, we need a new athletic director and we need an actual athletic program. We're lacking those things. It's time for equity amongst teams and transparency when it comes to funds collected. It's time for a change. Status quo is not okay anymore. Only a couple of teams get those buses that were talked about earlier. The rest of us, when we want to take our children to their athletic events, we have to take a half-day off of school to drive them. Only certain teams get those special privileges. Where is the equity? Teams don't have adequate uniforms and equipment unless the coaches or parents collect additional funds besides the ones that the athletic director collects. Where is the transparency? Where are the funds going? Why aren't these parents, why aren't there parent meetings at the beginning of every season so that we're all on the same page? Parents, students, or I should say athletes and coaches should all be there. But instead, all of this falls on the coaches' shoulders. They're all working in isolation. We start every year with a back-to-school night so that teachers and parents can be on the same page and have the same expectations. Why don't we do this with our athletic department and with our athletic program? We don't have a program. We need a program and we need an AD who can handle it. We all need to know what the expectations and behaviors are for our kids and for all of us so that when we're at our athletic events, we're all cheering for our kids and our coaches. We have lost a lot of good coaches due to the lack of the fact that we have no athletic program. All the work is heaped on these coaches and they can't keep up. There's no programming, there's no scheduling, there's no communication. There's never been a coaches' meeting with an athletic director. It seems like each sport is in their own. Kids and parents have to rely on Facebook for information. That's not okay. It's not acceptable. I applaud you in taking steps for change in order for all of our students to become more physically active. Maybe with an actual program, kids will try a new sport or actually make the team of the sport that they love because we'll have enough teams because as of now, they have not been supported. Thank you very much for your time and all your efforts.
Thank you. Next up will be Ann Elliott. Elliot, go ahead and introduce yourself.
This is Steve Elliott. I'm the head baseball coach at Alhambra High School. I've been, can you hear me?
Yes, Steve, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I've been coaching at Alhambra for seven years. I started out as the head JV baseball coach for the, for three years and then the last four years, I was the head varsity baseball coach. And I've worked alongside Pat Ratola for a number of years, known it even before I got into coaching, just through the community. I've always had a very good working relationship with Pat. I haven't always agreed with some of the decisions that were made that affected the baseball program, but I went along with it. I knew he had a difficult job at times and I didn't want to make it any harder on him. I had mutual, I think we had a mutual respect for each other. Unfortunately, there was an incident that occurred this year on May fourth. It was a Tuesday baseball game, home varsity baseball game in Alhambra. And I guess it was a scheduling conflict with another high school team that wanted to use our field. It was the junior varsity soccer, girls soccer team. So we were running a little behind and I wanted to finish the game. And to make a long story short, Pat interrupted the game, came on the field, informed me that we had to shut it down and stop the game before it was over. One thing led to another. Of course, we were disappointed, but I allowed him to do it. He went out there and he contacted the coach. They were confused and disappointed, but anyway, afterwards, there was an incident where there was a words exchange with my assistant coach and Pat, and I don't know exactly, let them speak on that behalf, but Pat initially started walking away like he should have done, and then he turned around and came back. And I think it just made things worse. He got into it with my assistant coach in front of the dugout, okay? And I've seen arguments take place before, but the incident that really struck me was when I saw Pat inappropriately grab my coach by the back of the arm and pull him towards him in a way that was just totally inappropriate in front of the kids and everything else. And I'm just speaking up on behalf of my coach and on my program because that's not what we're about. And I had to intervene physically, get in there and escort Pat away from the field. And I just thought that the whole situation could have been avoided. And I just think that, you know, you just can't put your hands on people, period. You can't do that, okay? There's no excuse. We all have difficult jobs. It was a difficult season for all of us coaches. If that were me doing that to him or vice versa, another coach did that to another coach or whatever, they'd be gone in an instant. I just think we have to hold people accountable. I hold my kids accountable, my coaches accountable. I'm held accountable. And I think that we need to step up and make a tough decision here. Pat's done a lot of good things over the years for the school, as we all know. But I can't sit back and be a hypocrite and not explain to these kids that other people aren't held accountable for their actions when these kids are on a daily basis. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. We're out of, just about out of time for the twenty minutes of public comments under this agenda item. So we're going to move on to our next agenda item. Everybody, you have their hands raised.
In that order, please.
Yeah, so I'm writing them down.
Great.
Stick around for agenda item seventeen. And we will take your public comments. At that time, don't put your hands down yet because I'm writing your names down so that I have them. People are adding themselves.
Can you, can you read out the names of everyone before they close out the sign up?
Catherine Hearn will be first, Megan LeBlanc, Gina, Patty T., Alan Joyce, Eric Cowerson, Caroline Morris, Karen Caraniso, Kristen Caraniso, Angela Paradise, Mary Lopez, Sean Sullivan, I see. That's more than twenty minutes right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A. Benz, do you ready?
Let's have, let's have that.
Okay, that's, that's the list, folks, for public comments under agenda item seventeen. What do you have, A.?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's gonna be more than twenty minutes. And I'm, I'm interested in letting people speak if they're gonna stick around for the rest of our meeting. I don't, do we have the ability to lessen time for people to talk? I mean, obviously, we can remind people to, if they're agreeing with someone else that has already said something, ensure that they just happily surrender their time and move on. But I think it's, the board can have a bit of leeway to have it proceed with it, knowing that they've got a long, long agenda to follow.
I want, I want everyone to have their voice heard. However, the board is not required to hear repetitive statements. If people have a burning desire to say the same thing because many people have spoken before them with regards to the issue, they can submit their comments to the board at running. Or the board could, or president can make the decision to reduce the amount of time allowed to each speaker so that each person would have their opportunity to speak, although it would be truncated. We have to be mindful that it's a school night, literally. Or, well, for some people, we have kids in, in summer school and daycare. And also, it's, it's, it's a working night for the staff of the district and for all members of this board. We have day jobs. We traditionally do not run our meetings past nine-thirty without taking special action. And I have no kid at home and we really like to be able to get home and relieve my life. Even though this is my last board meeting, I'm still there and still have things to do. So that's, that's what I had to say about that. I want to hear what people have to say, but please don't make us hear the same thing over and over again. It doesn't reinforce a point one way or another.
Right. So if everybody is listening, please try not to be repetitive of other speakers. And I think we'll reduce the time for public comments in agenda item seventeen to two minutes per speaker. That's something we have a chance to get everybody. At this point, we'll move on to agenda item fifteen, which is the consent calendar. Any changes to the consent calendar?
Never mind.
Any questions or comments from the board regarding the consent calendar? Any public comments regarding agenda item fifteen? It's like we have answers. Time of our, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy. So I just want to call out for the board members that are in attendance. Some of us do stick around for topics that far outreach, current days events. One of the things that I'd like to call out first of all, in the consent calendar, first of all, I was fortunate enough to still be at Morello Park and be an active parent in Morello Park when Stacy Jocelyn entered the school district. I was extremely disheartened to open up the personnel items within the consent calendar this evening and find that she has tendered her resignation and is leaving the school district. Stacy, on behalf of those of us who are fortunate enough to have you as both the principal and director of our personnel within the school district, thank you so much for everything that you gave to our students and this community. Likewise, to Alex, I've known you for several years as well. You've given unconsiderably to the district and to this community. And I was equally shocked to see your resignation on the personnel items this list, this evening as well. Best of luck to both of you and wherever your endeavors take you, and thank you for the time in serving this community. One of the things I would like to put forward to the board and to Julie and the executive cabinet is, I don't have exact numbers, but one of the things that I've been finding I don't have exact numbers, but one of the things that I've been finding as a trend over the last three to four months, three to four months is we have, it appears to have a significant amount of turnover within the district office. I don't know based off of exit surveys or what knowledge, of what you know of why people are leaving their positions. But turnover has a significant cost, both above and below the line. When you start talking about losing subject matter expertise, the time to retrain new individuals in new roles, it also can be a healthy opportunity to introduce new people to new responsibilities. I'm not going to argue either point. But I do start to question in such a small staff, why we've got such a significant amount of turnover. That being said, the other, the other thing that I identified through several of these positions that have been vacated over the last several months is that we have a significant amount of number of jobs, particularly at the administrative level, that seem to be having their jobs reevaluated. Generally, that, that might be the right thing to do. The one thing that I would put in front of everyone is rather than reactively reevaluating jobs, is there possibly a need to do something more far reaching and do a full review of what's needed on behalf of the district, both inside the administrative offices as well as on our school campuses? We've taken a significant number of cuts in counselors, librarian hours, things that directly touch our students. And over the last few months, the only thing I've seen are things that hit our administrators and nothing that directly impacts our students. I'm starting to question why. It's great. We have a budget surplus right now. But my first question without a budget advisory committee is, is that budget surplus sustainable? Or is it directly as a result of the funds that we've received as a result of the last 15 months with regards to COVID? Thank you.
Gina, you're up next. Go ahead, Gina. Introduce yourself. I need you up three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
I would like to thank you, all board members, for your time and your efforts. Much appreciated. I'll make it quick. I am in support of change in our athletics department. And I, I think that it is definitely
Gina, this is, this is the wrong agenda, Gina. This is agenda item fifteen.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So come back for agenda item seventeen.
Okay.
Oh, you already won this. So agenda item seventeen, Gina. Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Motion passes. We can move on to agenda item sixteen. Items for board consideration or action in sixteen point one is approval of the 2021 through 2024 local control and accountability plan.
Thank you. As you stated, I'm bringing back the 2021 to 2024 LCAP for your review. So we did take in consideration the feedback that the board provided us as well as public comment and have made some adjustments to the action items to make it more clear in terms of how we're allocating the funds in the action items and make it more succinct. So if, if you wanted me to specifically say like what we did in terms of like reducing and solidifying that, I'm happy to speak to that, but essentially this evening is for board to fully approve our new LCAP.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Yeah, would you mind? I mean, you don't have to go through everything. You did, you did a really thorough job last time. And I know that there were kind of a few specific things that maybe you could call out that you, you know, that you added as far as more specific information tied to, you got that?
Yeah, sure. I don't have it directly in front of me, but I'll speak in generality of some of the changes that we made. So one of the public comments, and I know board members also were asking for more clarity around our suspension data and what were the actions that were going to be related to us addressing that. So we added clarity in our goal four, which is our school safety and climate goal. And made sure to be more direct in putting money and funding around a professional development for restorative justice practice and calling out specifically, making sure that we're monitoring that data and not seeing some of the trends that we've seen in the past of our African American students having a higher suspension rate. So wanting to make sure that we are addressing that directly through our professional development and then our restorative justice practices that we will continue to implement in our school. So we did call that out more specifically in goal four. We also had some kind of vague action items in our goal, I think it was goal four and goal one that we just wanted to tighten up a little bit and be more specific around who we were contracting. So with our academic goal, we talked about professional learning communities and we wanted to be specific about who we were contracting with. So it was more clear to our stakeholders of how we are allocating our funds. And that's true with some of our other partnerships with West Ed and UDL. And then calling out our specific data that we're collecting around climate with our California Healthiest Kids Survey. So those are just a couple of high level pieces without going into the weeds. But we just, we were really attempting to be more specific and transparent on where we are allocating our funds with the LCAP and LCFF dollars.
And then I also, because of the time for community input, is it closed now after we take this action stuff?
I mean, you mean, once you approve the LCAP, is that you're saying to make changes?
Yeah, I mean, I know the community can give really input at any time. But it's for us to incorporate into this year's plan. Because I know by law, right, there, we have to have a certain period of time that's open. And so this is signifying that this period of time is closing with regard to this LCAP and the new information input we get is going to utilize for when we formulate next years and then obviously how we're going to be providing services.
That's correct. So we have a June first deadline to submit our LCAP to the county for review. And they'll review and then also give us feedback in terms of if there's any adjustments or priorities. So when I mentioned the eight priorities from the state, if we're missing anything, then they would give us feedback on if there was an area they wanted us to increase or expand upon. So we do get feedback from the county as well before we formally submit it to the C D E. But I really think it's important to think about the LCAP as it, as a living document. And so even though we say it's a three-year plan, it is definitely flexible. And there are going to be opportunities or there will continue to be opportunities to make adjustments. I mean, this is based on our data in this point in time. And remember, the data's been really difficult to collect with it being school closure and with COVID-19. So I think that we're also going to have, continue to get more relevant local data on our students that we're going to need to respond to in our goals. So yes, you're closing it for this point in time, but it will remain fluid as we move forward. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board, Randy? Okay, we'll open up for public comments on agenda item sixteen point one. Any other comments on agenda item sixteen point one? Okay, there's. Jake, I see you're in up for agenda item sixteen point one. We have three minutes. Go ahead. Jake?
Yeah. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is agenda item sixteen point one.
Oh, sixteen point one? Sorry, of course, seventeen. I didn't mean to.
No problem. Just basically, you want to get to seventeen?
Gotcha.
Dejewel Keen? Azvedo? Go ahead. Any other help here? I just, you know, push. Joaquin, did you click on mute? Joaquin, this is agenda item sixteen point one. If you want to talk on this one, go ahead. Yeah, he would, he needs to unmute on his end. Joaquin, you need to unmute.
Sorry, I'm muted. This is Joaquin Azvedo. I just heard that, you know, with this, you know, coach at the Alhambra High School, I'm a varsity offensive line coach.
Here. This is agenda item sixteen point one. Okay? So, so if you have a public comments on agenda item sixteen point one, that's fine. But if not.
Oh, no. No, different topic, different topic.
Thanks, Joaquin. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments from the board before we take action? Okay, this is an action item. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Okay, now we get to move on to agenda item sixteen point two, which is approval of the 2021, 2022 budget and balances in excess of minimum reserves. This is an action item. Helen is presenting.
Good evening tonight. Well, last, two weeks ago, I presented the 2021, 22 budget to the board, which maintains a positive balance at the end of not only next school year, but the next two subsequent school years out without having to make any additional budget reductions as we've had over the past four years. So this evening, the board is being asked to adopt the budget as presented on the fourteenth of June.
Excellent. Any questions, comments from the board?
I, I just wanted to see if Helen would indulge us in a little more information that the budget's looking really rosy right now, but it's really based on projections of one-time money that's limited that we know is only coming for a couple of years in response to COVID from the state and won't be ongoing.
When I, when I created the budget, I created two multi-year projections. One of them projections have all of the one-time money that we will be getting and we are getting from the state and federal government due to learning loss mitigation, ventilation, and so on and so forth, issues that came about from COVID pandemic. So the, obviously, the budget, the multi-year projection with the one-time money is a little healthier. It leaves us at an eighteen percent on our third year out. But on the multi-year projection after, I pretended we never got any money and I did the same exact projection with our recent budget cuts from last year and all of that in there. And we came out our third year and with an eleven percent, eleven percent reserve after three years, which is better than we've seen here in this district for, I know, at least the four years that I've been doing this. So this is a direct result on the over a million dollars worth of cuts that we've made in the past four or five years. And the one-time money allows us to put measures in place, hire extra staff, and different plans in place to help our students and our staff move forward, both academically and in the area of mental, social, emotional learning and health. And that's what the money's given us, given to us for, and it's not indefinitely. It does end. And different pots of money will come in and out. And I believe right now the cutoff will be somewhere around the end of the school year of 2025. So the things that we are adding according to the ELO plan and the other plans which we have adopted through the board over the course of the last six months, the monies there will go away and positions are temporary unless we find that they have a significant impact. And then we'll have to take a look at where our priorities is at and how we can afford to keep those that are working well and shuffle around those that are not.
Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I just want to thank you for your hard work on this because I know when I was running and everyone, a lot of you in this room said, budget's the hardest thing. We had other harder things this year and we made it so that that didn't have to be the hardest thing this year. So I appreciate that work and yeah, I'm glad that we're, we're sitting in a good position with the, in the foreseeable future. So thank you very much.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comments. Just a reminder, everybody, this is public comments on agenda item sixteen point two. We have three minutes to talk. Will first be, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm kind of perusing the budget there. And just kind of directly related to coaching stipends. And I know that there's some coaches that actually volunteer and they don't get paid. But I, I know that you've got coaches that put a lot of time into whatever sport that they're coaching. And I realize that you're not going to retire from coaching high school football unless you're a teacher or any sport. I coached football. Obviously, I just gave my, my head away. But I, I really wish that this school district, and other school districts as well, but this school district in particular, because I coach here, would put more thought into how much we pay coaches. It helps for retention. It helps just because it's a, hey, thanks for going out there and putting your time in. It's time that you're taking away from your family that, that's important, you know? So that's my two cents on the budget is I wish that when we looked at this, we would, we would kind of try to take our time to appreciate coaches just a little bit more. Not asking you paid, what De La Salle pays their coaches. But I sure would like our coaching staff in all sports to be looked at a little bit more and, and help spread, spread it out to give us more incentive and appreciation. Thank you.
As well, does it look like there's any other public comments or bringing back to the board for action? Do we have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you very much, Helen. You're still up though, because sixteen point three is resolution number 2021 dash sixteen to establish temporary interfund transfers, special or restricted monies. This is an action item. Take it away, Helen.
You too, the, the district has, receives money from the state and the federal government in different brands. But it doesn't always come in on, our fiscal year goes from July first to June 30th. It doesn't always come in, everything is not in your checkbook on July first. So oftentimes, you have to do an interfund transfer from one of our funds that might have a little bit more money to cover an expense where we're going to get the funding from the federal government at half-year mark and a year mark. So in the cases where that might have to happen, we are required to pass a resolution to allow interfund transfers to happen as long as we pay it back. All of that is written in the resolution and we're specifically talking, our funds are mostly facility funds and of course, our general, our general fund and our food service fund. But we're looking, I'm looking tonight to ask the board to pass this resolution to allow that flexibility when we need it, if we need it. Throughout the course of this next year, Helen.
Okay, any questions from the board?
And we do this so that we don't have to take out a loan and get charged money. So it's actually a cost savings because we're using, utilizing the money we have. We don't have to pay our trans.
Right.
Any other questions, comments from the board? We'll open up the agenda item sixteen point three for public comments. So remember, folks, this is agenda item sixteen point three. If you have a public comments on this agenda item, be like me, Randy. Cena will bring it back to the board for action. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve resolution 2021 dash sixteen.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Most bests. Okay, agenda item sixteen point four. This is M O U with Martinez Education Association and the Martinez Unified School District and sunshine in proposals for the 2021, 2022 school year. This is an action item. Again, this is done on resume.
So tonight, I'm presenting the board with a double item here. An M O U, a memorandum of understanding between the Martinez Education Association An MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the Martinez Education Association, MEA, and the district, MUSD, which does two things. One, we're at the end of a three-year contract on June thirtieth and both parties have agreed to extend that contract one more year due to the vast amount of negotiating we've done in the past year. And this allows us to kind of regroup and, and focus on our students and come back to the table for the full three-year contract or four-year contract next year. And at the same time, it also provides both parties have agreed to open salary and benefits as the only two articles or the only articles being opened in the contract for the twenty one, twenty, twenty one, twenty two school year. So it's a twofold ask and staff is recommending that this board approve the MOU and the sunshining of the CBA agreement on salary benefits.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, we'll open it up for public comments. Is there any public comments on agenda item sixteen point four? Doesn't look like it. So can we vote on these things in the same motion or do we have two separate motions? It'd be annoying on the.
We can, we can. Some disagree. So if that makes more than a far.
Okay.
I'm a question. Uh, so I move to approve the MOU and the sunshining of the MEA's salary and benefits articles.
I second. Yeah, we're listening in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions asked. Thank you, Helen. Come on. And sixteen point five, filling a board vacancy. This is an action item in June.
Oh, well, the trustee writes resignation right now. We have a decision to make and the board shall take the following action as appropriate. When a vacancy occurs longer than four months before the end of a board member's term, the board shall, within sixty days of the date of the vacancy or the filing of the members' deferred resignation, either order an election or make a provisional appointment to fill that vacancy. As we have more than four months prior to that end of the member's term, I am asking that the board consider for approval of provisional appointments to fill the board vacancy.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
What's the budgetary impact if we were to send it off to vote?
Uh, give me one second. That is, should we choose to do a all-in-person? I mean, I'm sorry, if we do all mail, it's a hundred thousand dollars. And if we do the mail vote and auction, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, approximately.
And the budget impact for provisional appointments is not?
No. Our time to organize, our time to organize it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you have any questions, comments from the board?
If we do a provisional appointment, we would do that at the first August meeting?
I, if, if you choose to do that, I have a timeline for, um, at the second, at the second motion, but it would, uh, my recommendation would be to have it at the second meeting on August twenty-third.
Okay, so, so we, we may have just four of our board members for one meeting. There are two meetings in August.
Correct.
And if, for example, there would be a tie when we were voting for the new board member, would you do the tiebreaker or how does that work?
No, the, the, the item is table and that, that they move forward.
Whoa.
No, no, you would have multiple ballots.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm talking about, if she talk, are you talking about the board member vote? Are you talking about an issue that if, if we came with tie for a different issue? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm interpreting that as if we had an issue, say, voting on the L cap. Two folks say yes, two folks say no, we have to take the different issue that you're talking about. There, there's a process for a tiebreaker during the appointment.
I read that. Okay, got it. Thank you. So.
Any other questions, comments from the board? We'll open up a gen item sixteen point five for public comments. Comment for a gen item sixteen point five. It doesn't look like it, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Okay, I'll move to approve, um, the, what's that, provisional appointments uh, for the upcoming board vacancies. Second.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Obstacles? Okay. And now we get to move on to sixteen point six, which is the proposed timeline and procedures for filling a board vacancy.
Yes, thank you. And Dave, do you mind throwing up my presentation, please? Go ahead, the next slide, please. Thank you. Sorry, there's a lot of words on this. This is a terrible PowerPoint presentation. However, basically, a trustee right has resigned effective July one, so we have sixty days now to conduct our process. Basically, EDPO three five one oh seven kind of gives the specificities of who can run for his position. Any person regardless of sex, who is eighteen years of age or older, a citizen of the state, resident of the school district, registered voter, who is not disqualified by the constitution or laws of the state in holding a civil office and must reside in trustee, in the trustee area one boundaries and not be employed by the school district. And a quick, next quick slide just kind of shows the, the yellow, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, but the yellow is the highlighted area of trustee area one. And if we could go on to our proposed timeline, please. So, um, thank you. Tonight, we did determine to fill the vacancy via provisional appointment. Uh, tomorrow, I will send out a press release to the media, to the Controplasta Times, on our website, on our marquees, notifying folks of the vacancy. On August fifth, it can have an optional informational meeting with the candidates and myself. August thirteenth would be the end of the period for filing applications for appointment. So if somebody is interested in, in running, the, the packets need to be sent to the district office and received by four thirty. We would not accept email packets. Um, and you can mail your packet, but just, I'd be worried in just in case mail delay, something along those lines. So please be sure to come and bring that in person. And then the next slide, August sixteenth, um, we would have a subcommittee of the, of board members review the applications for eligibility. Make sure the folks who have applied meet the criteria, the necessary criteria. On August eighteenth, we would do another press release of the names of the eligible candidates or applicants. And at, uh, there's a couple of ways we can do this. We can do this at, um, the August twenty-third regular board meeting. Or we could do a special board meeting, if that was more in your purview, but I just went with the regular board meeting. Interviews are conducted in open session. And through a process, the provisional appointee would be selected. Not go through that process in one second. The board would select their candidate and that individual can, if we do it at a regular board meeting, just comes and sits down, is sworn in. As I, I did watch the previous session when President Janelle was appointed and just kind of takes over and sits down at the table. And then the following day, on the twenty-fourth, we would announce the, the appointment of our current board member. So that, that's kind of the current timeline if we chose to do that. And then just kind of what the process looks like. Candidates are, you know, you finish your pack, you submit your packet. If you are cleared and you're selected, you'll be interviewed in open session. Depending on the number of candidates, in, previously, we have done a selection through board members using dots. Um, our attorney, um, just wanted to make sure that folks could see which way our board members voted. So we have to be very clear if we use dots, that folks can see what they want to use. And depending on the number of candidates we have, we may change our mind and want to do a ranking system or something along those lines, but we can see to that. And so, um, candidates would come to a podium and ask, they will be asked about six questions, they have about two minutes to answer each question with a closing statement. And then the public has a few moments to comment on some of the candidates. Board members deliberate and then they kind of show our voting. And the candidate who has majority votes is then selected. If there are issues, if there are ties, there are additional processes to kind of break the ties. Uh, again, after the first round of voting and there's still a tie, there is a lottery system and that individual is selected by lottery. So, um, right after that, the candidate that is who is selected, like I said, is sworn in and sits down at the table and welcome to the team. So that is, that is the process. And, um, just, just for the individual who knows, uh, the provisional appointment, if you are selected, that's wonderful, but should you choose to run for election, November twenty twenty-two is the next time that you would need to run for election. Is there any questions?
How are people, uh, how do people pick up an application?
Um, great question. It will be on our website. We will put it on our website. If folks are interested, they can come to the district office and we all have a hard copy for them as well.
Okay.
Good question.
Any other questions?
And so Jonathan was just selected in November, so that person who's appointed would run in twenty twenty-two and again in twenty twenty-four. Should they choose?
Correct. Correct. So, good.
Yeah, just, just like, just like me. Any other questions from the board?
I like the timeline. It, uh, it allows for us to, um, as part of post-session, go over the questions that will go to the candidates and we'll be able to review that as a group. Um, and then we'll have a, a meeting to do it. The only thing that I'm a little bit hesitant, um, and we can probably, if we have a really heavy calendar, I mean, I'm assuming normally our August meetings are pretty light. Um, but who knows? I, I could, I mean, we could have three, four-hour meetings, but I don't want to do that. One for the candidates, two for our public. So if, if we need to, I think if we're going to publicize that we're going to be doing this at a general meeting, then if you can let us know how everything else is looking, maybe if you have another issue, we find a special meeting for the other part of, of our business.
Sure.
Um, because I know that going through this decision-making process, especially during the summer, you know, people could be rearranging things, um, trying to start a school and, and making sure they're picking up packets. And I, I want to make sure that we stay sure to, to do that.
No problem. We can do that. That's not a problem.
Great. And I think the other thing that I was going to mention, the subcommittee is like a subcommittee of one, like one of us who wants to look at it and you or another person in the cabinet. And essentially, you just look at it and you look at the map and make sure that's the only, that's the only kind of palette you have is to make sure that the person who's in the trustee area. So that's, you've done it before, haven't you?
Yeah, you also have to verify that they're registered voters.
And registered voters. So you, you know, that subcommittee doesn't have any ability to, you know, put people off and on or, or there's no power.
It's purely magisterial. There is no editorializing, you know, the pulling of their.
It sounds really good, but it's not. It's, it's just going to work.
Yeah, I mean, we may end up with a couple of busy August meetings, but we'll make it, make it through those. Any other questions, comments from the board? I, I just want to, again, apologize for the extra work that this will, um, put upon all of the board and all of this, without the staff. But, um, you know, last year, we had to work all through the summer very hard and I was greatly hoping that, um, this board could take at least some, somewhat of a grip during July and hopefully you, you know, you will be able to, at least you won't have the whole meetings during July. So I'm sorry for the work that this has come up with. Um, okay, if we open it up for public comments at this point in time, any public comments on agenda item sixteen point six? Doesn't look like it, so we'll bring it back to the board for action. You have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Obstacles?
Stay.
Questions asked of us. And now, we found my list here. We are on a gen item seventeen, which is additional comments from the public. And again, we'll limit public comments to two minutes per person for this session. Catherine Hearn, uh, if you're still here, you were first. President Janelle, do we have a cap? Are we taking the speakers from the list? We're, we're taking the speakers from the list. Okay. Again, the first, the first four speakers are Catherine Hearn, Katie McLaughlin, Gina, and Patty T. So if you four are still here, please raise your hand. Hey, Catherine, go ahead.
Good evening and thank you. Hello, my name is Catherine Hearn, teacher, coach, and parent in our school district. It's unfortunate that two of Alhambra's baseball coaches are attempting to relitigate an incident which Pat was investigated for by the principal. Several eyewitnesses were interviewed and in their testimony is, in their testimonies in direct contradiction to the baseball coach's comments tonight. Pat was exonerated of any wrongdoing at the end of the investigation and resumed his duties as AD. I suggest that the findings of the investigation possibly be made public so that the truth can be known and disinformation like what was stated tonight cannot be allowed to stand as fact. What was said is extremely unfair and arguably defamatory. The record needs to be corrected. I cannot emphasize enough comments made previously by Andrea Salas on the damaging effects of making someone like Pat a scapegoat because he's not protected by a union. Without that protect, protection, the perception is that Pat has been used as the easy button for a much larger problem in our district's handling of complaints in athletics. We have some fundamental flaws in a system that allows disgruntled parents an easy path straight to the top without having to address those concerns directly with coaches, the AD, or even the principal. Concerns that sometimes have no merit and are based solely on feelings and emotions over their child's athletic participation. I completely understand those emotions and have to check my own as a parent of student athletes. There's commonly a heard excuse of fear of retribution that people hide behind and use as justification for not using the chain of command properly. Another protection at will employees don't have is the luxury of actually being told the truth behind their release. It's bad enough when we let go of our untenured teachers without cause, but to do the same with someone who has devoted twenty-five years of hard work and passion for Alhambra Athletics and their students is reprehensible. I know you have attorneys that advise you on what you can and can't legally do. I don't doubt that you are within the bounds of the law, but there's an old saying, "Just because you can, doesn't mean you should." Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next up is Katie McLaughlin. Katie, there you go. Go ahead, Katie.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Good evening and thank you for this time. I'm Katie McLaughlin, part of the mob that one of the teachers has unfortunately called us this evening and what we have seen on social media, on parents' pages, mind you. It is very unfortunate that teachers and staff of Alhambra, as well as dads that are coaches who do not like what they are hearing about the parent ask to end nepotism, have driven this divide and please make note, we, the parents, we sure are making, uh, taking note of what is transpiring and we watching for retaliation. It is real. We feel it, we read it, we see it, we won't tolerate it any longer. You have just demonstrated yourselves the exact cultures we so wish to discuss and change. I hope we can all rise to this challenge and work through this as adults. Let us parents help lead you down that path. We met with the principal and superintendent after following the change of command and it was very respectful. Personal attacks were avoided and left the meeting with our heads held high. Yes, we asked for a change in the head football coach or add another head coach to be added that could lead the way, lead the team, and have equal say. But we did it with respect and grace. We kept it professional. Why can't the same be returned? One of the main issues discussed that evening was there's a distinct difference between a leader and someone who is just managing. This was in no way a personal attack on our AD or any of our coaches. It just comes down to be able to fulfill a role and do it well. We are very appreciative of Pat's, our AD's service. One of the ma- many issues we also discuss and try, have been trying to address for years is the negative culture and to which one we had just contributed, he has contributed over the past few days and has lost support of my entire family, the McLaughlin family. But will we remain respectful and cordial when we encounter each other? Yes, absolutely. We will be friendly neighbors. We will once again lead by example. And yes, things can be forgiven. Dr. Senior, the forty-plus parents that showed up to demand change in football and.
Katie, your two minutes are up. I'm sorry about that. Next up will be Gina. Gina, uh, you were here. I don't see any anymore. So we'll move on to Patty T. Patty, T, you're a mess.
Hello?
Go ahead, Patty.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak and thank you for your service. On June fifteenth, I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Chamberlain and Dr. On June fifteenth, I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Chamberlain and Dr. Senard regarding my concerns as a parent with the athletic program at Alhambra High School. I am also in support of change for the athletic program. I reiterate several of the comments made already by parents here tonight and parents at that meeting. I want to contradict some statements that were just made earlier. It was not a bitch session for anybody to be a part of a faculty or a group to summarize our parent concerns as that type of section, session is wrong. There were no disgruntled comments and there was absolutely zero comments about player participation. Parents want to be respected. Parents want to contribute and parents want to be heard. To that end, I asked the board to require the parent survey to be sent out to athletic families so we can be part of constructive change and help with future Alhambra athletics. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Next up will be Alan Boyce and Eric, one, three Barnes, and then Kristen.
Hi, this is Al Boyce. I'm the head coach of the Alhambra Lacrosse Program. I started it fifteen years ago with a group of kids and the help of Pat Ortola. I'm also the P.A. announcer for the football games and did several other sports there when I was not coaching. And then when I started coaching, I stopped being the P.A. announcer. Pat has been a constant positive for the athletic program that everyone keeps banging on in this meeting tonight. Pat has served under six different principals and he has served under six or seven different superintendents. It's apparent that our school and our district is a, a springboard for everyone to move to a bigger or better district or school. It is, the one constant that we have continuously, continuously had has been Pat Ortola for our athletic program. As such, our baseball team won the NCS. Our football team has won league championships. Our basketball team has won league championships and gone to the playoffs. Our track teams, our swim teams, our water polo teams. Because of Pat, our school matches sports with every single other school in our league. We are in a unique situation in, right now in high school sports where parents shop their kids around to the different high schools to see what's best for them in their future of possibly going to college and maybe the pros. And yes, we have sent our small school athletes to the pros. Okay? One year, we sent six kids to sit, to D-one athletic programs, both boys and girls. Pat was involved in every single one of those. I have seen Pat in the rain after the football game is over, picking up the yard markers by himself. And I have seen Pat picking up and folding the chairs after graduation on a Saturday morning. And he's the athletic director, he's not the groundskeeper. You have made a mistake and you have gotten rid of a good man for this town, for this community, and I'm sorry to see him go.
You know? Next up, uh, was Eric Halverson. Eric, if you, if you're still here, you want to make your public comment, you want to raise your hand. Okay, let me move on to the next. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Hello?
Go ahead, Eric. We got two minutes.
Yes, my name is Eric Halverson and I would like to thank the board for hearing my comments. I have been a high school football coach for over thirty years and have worked in several different programs with, around the state. Um, I have been on staff at Alhambra High School for the past two seasons. And have been part of, uh, I believe there are some great things going on with the athletic program at AHS. With many successes that do not always equate to wins and losses. I do believe Pat Ortola has been wrongfully dismissed and the decision to do so may have been done in haste. Pat has always gone over and above to support, promote, and guide all of the athletic programs at AHS. He has always been available and responsive. This past year has not, uh, this past year was not a typical year. As we all know, during COVID, Pat managed to field twenty-five sports teams, eight hundred and eighty-five athletes who played in three hundred and ninety-two contests with zero COVID cases. I think that is a huge success. Uh, I, I have to believe that there are proper protocols for filing complaints, investigating complaints, implementing change, or dismissing personnel. Is very concerning that a couple of disgruntled parents are able to speak out against coaches or administrators and their jobs are in jeopardy. We all take our jobs seriously and we do not do it for the pay. We coach and participate in athletics for two reasons, primary reasons. For the love of the game and two, for the opportunity to have a positive impact on young men and women.
Hey Eric, your two minutes is up. Thank you very much. Next up is one, three Barnes, one, if you still want to make your public comments, please raise your hand. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, why don't introduce, introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Brianna Barnes. I am the sports medicine instructor and head athletic trainer at AHS. Uh, I am one of the colleagues that works closest with Pat on a day-to-day basis. Um, it is my understanding that Mr. Ortola was terminated due to some complaints and the decision to hire a full-time athletic director was taken. Uh, I'd like to voice my concerns on how thoroughly these complaints were vetted. As I stated, I work with Pat side by side. And I am curious to know that why I or no one related to the athletic department was questioned, interviewed to vet these complaints or at least give some perspective. I have concerns as to why no one else related to the athletic department was informed that there was such large issues to warrant a parent meeting. Uh, as a healthcare professional, I'm aware that confidentiality is of the utmost importance. However, if it affects people and their work, do they not deserve to at least be informed? If these complaints were so incredibly serious, um, how are we to ever fix a solution or come to a solution if these quote, "secret" meetings that are held by invite-only with no other perspective to be given? Lastly, I'd like to address the hiring of a full-time athletic director. Today, we have heard comments regarding budget cuts. Um, by paying a full-time athletic director, we would take money away from programs they need it, such as art and athletics as a whole. Um, I'd like to stress that I do love and value our AHS parent opinions and their perspectives. However, us as members of the athletic department would like to join the conversation to find a solution as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next three up will be Kristen, Angela, and Mary. If the three of you would like to make your public comments, please raise your hands. Okay, Kristen, go ahead.
Hello, this is actually John Paradiso, Kristen's husband. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Um, I've been the, uh, I'm speaking behalf of Pat Ortola. I've been the varsity tennis coach for the last two years. And I just wanted to say that when I began, Pat was very welcoming to me. And he provided me with all the information, structure, and support that I needed to have a very successful tennis season. Um, he was available all times of day. I talked to him on the weekend at times if I had extra questions. And um, I really felt supported by him and I just wanted to put that out there, that he was a good A.D. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angela, you are up next. Go ahead, Angela.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, my name's Angela Paradise. Uh, I've been coaching at Alhambra for almost twenty years. I am also, um, have had the position of the athletic secretary working with Pat. I would like to ask the board to please reconsider reinstating him. I too have seen Pat out long after games and meets and in the pouring rain, um, doing things he has to do. Well, he doesn't have to do them, he does them for the kids. Also, um, I have on Pat's behalf sent out several communications to both all students and all parents. And there have been numerous coaches' meetings over the years. Pat has always been a supporter of all athletics and all students, even the athletes of the not-so-popular sports. So at this time, um, I would like to ask the board to reinstate him. Thank you.
Mary, you will be up next. Go ahead, Mary. Eric, if you want to make your public comment, please raise your hand.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. You've been a lot of her time. Yeah, man, I see her because she want to, she wants to. There you go. Go ahead, Mary.
Thanks. My mute button wasn't that fast. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Lopez-Kiefer. I'm a mother of three, recent graduate from Alhambra High School. So I've been a parent for eighteen years. Um, and I want to thank each of you for your commitment to your positions. Um, and I want to support the superintendent and her decision or the board's decision um, in tonight regarding the athletics director at Alhambra High School. Um, I like to support also the comments made by fellow parent Amy Benz this evening. Um, I found her words powerful and I support equity in our athletics department. So thank you for your work and I just wanted to make sure you heard that this parent supports the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sean Marcy and Roll. Although I don't see Sean on line anymore. So Marcy. Since I meet you, you have two minutes. Go ahead, Marcy.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm the chair advisor for Alhambra High School and I've been there for seventeen years. Um, Pat has always been very, very supportive of our sport, even though most people don't consider it a sport. There have been very, um, there have been coaches' meetings with all the coaches getting together every year. We have a meeting at the beginning of the year to discuss what is expected of us. I just feel like, and I don't, I didn't write this down, but um, I just feel like, I, I just want you to understand that how supportive he is to all the sport. I mean, I don't, we cheer for other sports, not just mine. And he's always there. And I am also the, the coach for stunt, which is a brand-new sport. And, and I just feel that he's been, he was supported. This year has been very difficult. He ha, he got the, we hit the ground running. We had sports going on. We had different sports all over the field. He had to coordinate all that and I think he did a really good job considering what he had, he was up against, especially when, you know, he was going through the thing with his father. I, I just feel like there was a tremendous amount of stress this year and I think he handled it pretty well. And um, I would like to uh, ask you to reinstate him as well. And that, I guess, I, I emailed all of you so you'll, you can get all of that. I just wanted to publicly say that I support him and everything that he's done for me over the past seventeen years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And next up will be Roll, Jake, and Green. So Roll, if you're still here and you want to make your public comment, please raise your hand. Does it look like it? Uh, Jake Benz, you're up next. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, Jake, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Jake Benz. I'm a father of two boys, uh, one incoming freshman and a senior. I'm also the assistant baseball coach through the past four years. I have a very respected, extensive background within the baseball community. Um, I have a few things that I, I'm not going to go over what Steve said. However, um, going over the incident on five-four, um, twenty-one this year, a few things that Steve left out. Um, when Steve uh, was in the dugout, Pat Ortola decided to walk across the field to play, uh, both endangering the right fielder for Ignacio and himself if the ball was hit out there. He followed that up by walking behind home plate, um, without calling timeout while the pitcher was coming set to throw a pitch, again endangering himself. And canceling the game. I, I can't say enough of how much he disrespected the, the baseball team itself by canceling a game. I, I bring this up because the following week, uh, basketball overran its time during volleyball when they were having senior night. Uh, did basketball shut down their game early? For volleyball? That, that was a no. Basketball's able to finish the game and volleyball was able to continue afterwards. So there's a bit of hypocrisy there. There was no point in which this should happen. Um, and also, I would like to speak out against people who were not there. Pat did grab me, people. Uh, he grabbed me on my upper arm. And Catherine Hearn, I would expect somebody from a military college, you know, you never talk about something that you have zero firsthand knowledge about. Making a comment about this, I would expect you to have been there. You were not. Change is hard, people. But.
Your time is up, Jake. Uh, I want to thank everybody for sticking around for public comment this evening. We'll move on to agenda item number eighteen, which are comments from new superintendent, board members, and future agenda items. Uh, we'll go a little bit different order this evening. Julie, we'll let you start off. You want to go next?
Oh, that's okay. I, I'll go now. Um, I, I just want to um, thank everybody, thank everybody for their involvement. Um, I know this meeting has been challenging and I'm acknowledging that. Thank you, folks. Um, this has been, this has been a challenging year and uh, like no other I've ever had in education. And uh, it feels like the hits just keep on coming. So with that being said, um, I've heard all the concerns from folks. Uh, we will figure out a way how to move forward and continue to support our students and staff. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for all of your dedication and hard work. Um, and uh, we, we are in a rebuilding phase. We, we are, there's just, there's no two ways around it. Uh, we have new district office staff. Uh, we have, have changes and uh, we're going to find some amazing people. I thank everybody for their service in the past and with, you know, my, my assistant is leaving. I wish her the best of luck. She's going to the county office of education. And so, you know, I'm proud of her and I wish her all the best. I wish nothing but the best for um, our other employees that are going in different directions as well. And uh, thank you to everyone. Again, Jonathan, thank you for your service. Uh, we're going to find another amazing board member in August. And uh, everybody, everybody take a deep breath and have a good summer.
Thank you, Julie. Courtney, you have it there.
More along the same lines, just thank you to everybody who stuck around tonight and took the time to attend and share your thoughts. Um, it was a rough year. More than one person said that. It's so true. So thank you to all the parents, all the staff, all the teachers, all the administrators, all the coaches. Um, yeah, we're going to move forward and, you know, we, we don't all always agree on everything, but every, every single person in this room and every person that took the time tonight cares about our community and our students. And um, I hope you all have a wonderful summer and we'll see you back here in August.
Amy?
I think, um, I'd like to echo a lot of that. I think when I, we all receive phone calls and emails from the community and this has been true every single day since I have been elected. The one thing that I know is true in every single one of those conversations is that people have a deep care for the students of this district. And so that to me is very encouraging because it means that we can, if we can see that in each other, we can move forward and continue to build. So I, um, I do want to end on a happy note, which is that we have some great, brand-new elementary schools to look forward to opening for kids who have not been on campus. Um, we have lots of kiddos who are going to go to John Muir for the first time. We've had the summer school at John Muir, which, um, so my son has attended and that's been really great. And then Los Angeles is just right around the corner. So those are. So those are some really positive things, and I think it's good to remind ourselves that we are doing the hard work and good things are happening even in the midst of challenging times. So I appreciate to all of our staff at all levels for all the hard work they've put in this year.
Peter?
All right, so it's been a long meeting, and I will completely echo that, but I I do want to thank, I want to, I want to thank the people who are going to keep working, even though we're not going to be in a meeting since our some of our sites are closed. We do have a lot of people who continue to work through the summer to make sure that these things that we have recognized that we need to keep working on or improve on, that we can hit the ground running. I especially wanted to to call out a big thank you for our families. A year ago, this this meeting was very different than it is right now. We're talking about, we weren't talking about going back to school then, but I I just feel, I feel better and I feel more confident that when I, when I go outside, I get to see people smiling faces and and I'm hoping that when we can all do that together, we can all reconnect. And I'm grateful for the people who are trying to put things in place so that we can meet the challenges of the day. And I'm fully confident that this district will meet a lot of them. I also know that we're going to continue to have to work. So thank you for everybody for the time, effort, the grinning and bearing through some of the frustrations this year. And I want to especially thank, I want to start with Helen because you really stepped up to make this year even possible for us to get started. And, you know, you've played many, many roles. And then I I just wanted to say that I'm extremely grateful that Dr. Senard has has gone to come on board. And yeah, we're going to have more challenging meetings, but I like the team and I'm, I'm confident as much as I'm listening, Jonathan, that we will find another person who loves his sister this month.
Jonathan Algea, last words.
Yeah, it's been a long night. We've definitely had longer nights in the past. We've definitely had more contentious nights in the past. And I I do thank every person who spoke and called a comment, regardless of whether or not I go, I I agree with you. You took the time to speak, and that means something. You know, next year, when we're able to hold, when the board is able to meet in person, I'll be curious to see how many people choose to attend and speak up. And I strongly encourage members of the community, as I always have since I've been a member of this board, strongly encourage people to attend board meetings, to pay attention, to listen and to speak up on issues that you feel strongly about. One of my biggest regrets of being involved with the school board is that we have absolutely zero local media. And if anyone from the local media is paying attention, I'm calling you all out because you suck. The fact is that we do incredible work here. Every single district in the county does incredible work, and there's no education reporter at the East Bay Times. There used to be. There is none. We, you know, I don't know where the Gazette is. We stopped seeing local reporters several years ago, even before the shutdown. We didn't even have reporters attending board meetings when they're on Zoom. That's outrageous. At our last board meeting, a member of the public made an impassioned plea for the district to provide necessary information about health updates. I I I don't agree that the school district is a public health agency, but I do understand the intent of that request. It was a call for help, for getting more information, because our local media provide no help to this community whatsoever. And the fact that we don't have local media reporting on what's happening in schools means that people are misinformed about what actually happens here, which makes board meetings that much more important and paying attention even more important. And for every site administrator, you know, I love you all and you do tremendous work, but really think about how frequently you are communicating with your students and your families and double it because it's not enough. Whatever you're doing now, at least multiply it by two and then add and then add more, maybe multiply it by two again. In this day and age, people expect constant, regular, useful information with links to outside sources and things that are engaging. And I I I know that we've had a tremendous number of things on our plate, believe me, I know, as as I know as well as anyone in this room. But we we can all always do better. And I swore off social media several years ago because personally I think it's a cancer in society. However, we still use email. We know that our parents read emails because we send out surveys and we get a very large number of responses. Use Twitter, use Instagram, whatever you have to do, but the fact is that, and I've said this before, the demographics of this community are changing. The old guard, God bless you, you're soon going to be, you know, outnumbered. This is a gentrified community, whether we like it or not. And there are new people moving into this community. We've seen it in droves during the pandemic. And unfortunately, well, for for better or worse, it just is what it is, but 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 new folks moving into town are going to have a different expectation and and are not going to be comfortable with the way they just, well, that's how it's been done. Hearing that as a response isn't good enough. I just want to want to point out a couple of quick things. I didn't mean to say that I had only one crowning achievement when I spoke earlier because I I I definitely have a long list of things that I really regret I was able to work on. I left out that we are, we're one of, we're one of the first districts to adopt the summer assistance program for our classified employees, which is a program that creates a dollar for dollar match from from the state of California for classified employees who set money aside so that they can continue to receive a paycheck during the summertime, those who are ten month employees, eleven month employees. Classified employees, for people who don't know, are non instructional staff or non managerial, and they are the lifeblood of school districts. School districts cannot function without classified employees, just like we cannot function without certificated teachers. Districts are systems and everybody plays their part. Additionally, Dr. Senard hiring you was such a blessing for this district, and I'm so grateful to have been a part of that, absolutely so grateful. And thank you for joining this 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 team and this district. I I feel as confident about leaving knowing that you are sitting as superintendent as the other four people here on the stage are. And Helen, as I've said many, 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 many times, and will say again, you're amazing, and I'm so grateful to have been able to to work alongside you and see you adapt to incredibly various circumstances and challenging circumstances. Your leadership is 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 something that I'll always remember. And I just want to say again a huge thank you to every single employee of this district, every family of this district, every student of this district. And we just leave on one note, if the board will remember one thing that I said, try and find someone to fill my seat who is not a parent of a current student of this district. There are many, many, many voters and residents and taxpayers of this district who do not have students enrolled in our schools, either because they don't have kids or their kids are older or their kids are itty bitty. We need a voice of a non school parent on the board. I think it's essential. I'm grateful to have been able to to provide that voice. And yes, my daughter is going to be in kindergarten in a year, class of twenty thirty five. Go Bulldogs twenty thirty five. But school districts are parts of 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 a community, and it takes work to create a community, and that means that all voices are essential, just like we heard from varying voices tonight, having a variety of voices on the board is is equally important. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. David, your rock star, thank you. You're buying the seat. Folks that don't know, David Wildley is our incredible tech guru and makes these meetings run. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. And with that, remind everybody our next meeting is August ninth, twenty twenty one. And with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.